No, 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 anybody wants to grab them.
So here's the.
Southeastland with a day picture.
At the next meeting, you will be getting rid of all of this. Well, not all of this. So the tables are going back to PD when I had done. But it was just time the mayor, they're supposed to be here. Pigott is supposed to be here next week to give us the numbers. The last puzzle piece was. The Legion and whether or not we can move them out of that closet and give them their own space. They were ecstatic about it a lot better than it's all said and done. But the friend. That's kind of a running joke because I won't sit on those staff meeting. They always put one out here for me and like every future sit on that because I'm already, I'm gonna go down.
It must be this one.
We appreciate you leaving for us.
Yeah. I'll, I'll remind the public where staff.
Part of the place is in his house.
That's not true.
Before we get too far in the little beret, let's officially call this meeting's order. First meeting in January of 2023 in City of Mount Vernon, the first time back here for a couple of years. First item is any agenda addition or approval here. Anything items maybe minor. Since agenda, there was a couple blanks on sex points, God rolls the safety committee. That'll also be dev added to that spot. And they talked to Craig about adding it to with Paul, the infrastructure committee. And that's type of thing that's big each once a year, maybe on some type of things. Other than those two additions, if you will, I'll undertake a motion to approve the agenda.
So who?
Our second.
For any board on that, all the people motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries out to the communications part of the meeting. Is anyone here from the public that is here to speak to any topic that is not on the agenda? Hearing none and chief of the meeting, anybody online?
There is not.
Okay, so no one, nobody there. Then delivers G. Amason on that sort of basically issue. And I think all kind of cute and everything about the process.
So Shane, you probably don't need to worry about that. There's nobody on.
Literally, first of all, this is not yelling for me. So I don't want anyone to think I'm trying to be intimidating or yelling at anyone. This is my voice, my 18 moment.
Yes.
Personally, I am upset that the historical society board, whatever you want to call them, has the right or ability to veto the building plans for a prospective buyer on the lot to the south of my property at 724 Fifth Avenue Northwest. I have been to the board of adjustments. I've done what I've been asked to do. I've had a surveyor come out. Ironically, he said it was the easiest job ever because originally it was two lots. It was already pre-pig as two lots. All he did was dig up the two pegs. It's already separated into a second lot. It's been merged in the past. Right now, I ask to have it separated and with the ability to sell the lot. I went to every house within eyesight of my house and talked to the homeowners expressing that this was on my agenda, that this was my plan, giving them the opportunity to ask questions, maybe say I don't agree, whatever. No one seemed to have a problem with that. One of those people happens to also be the president of the historic society who lives on my block. One of the issues that is apparently I got an email from the prospective buyer. We've had this sale in place for five months. It was contingent with a closing date of February 1st, contingent on being approved federal funding, which was denied because it was not approved by the historic society. That fell through. It is now past the point of being able to reapply. So it is done. According to the email, one of the things that the historic board asked was for hardboard exterior and front porch. Okay, on my block at the corner of Fifth Avenue and Seventh Street is the die house. That is aluminum siding. Those are aluminum windows. It is a ranch style home. It has an attached two stall garage. It is an open floor plan with a full floor basement. None of those details are historic and it was built in 2011. The historic board was started in the eighties. Now, I totally know and understand that the current president of the board was not the president then. But many people on that board were on that board in 2011 and they approved that property. So how is this not being approved? You can't tell me it's because of siding. That's garbage. Okay, let's say front porch. The house directly next to me, to the north, Ben and Lindsay can't live in it. They do not have a front porch. That was built in the fifties. I understand that that was before this board. But you have no precedent to state these requests and I'm limiting it just to the block I'm on. Not even all of Ash Park District. Furthermore, if the issue is that it was a duplex at the end of Fifth Ave and Eighth Street, across the street is a fourplex. I control baseball that far, or at least I used to be able to. Next to that is a house that is broken up into three units. They've done a lot of work on it recently. It is depth and season intersection of Fifth and Eighth. That is three units. The one directly next to that is Sean Manny Dietrich. That is three units. That is historically been a rental property of three units. And if you, if you're gonna say that on the other side of Eighth Street is not Ash Park District, well, then let's talk about Seventh Ave and Eighth Street. On the south side of Eighth Street, there's a fourplex there that used to be owned by Ace John and now it is owned by Nate Goodwin. That is in Ash Park District. That is a rental property. The idea that the Ash Park District should not have multi-unit function is not being backed up by precedent. The front porch aspect is not being backed up by precedent. The hardwood wood siding instead of vinyl siding is not being backed up by precedent. And again, the 2011 die house on the, on that corner was approved just 12 years ago, 11 years ago. So nothing of this adds up. Except for that it's a multi-unit and it's actually in their neighborhood. Now, in the paper that I read, they said, we appreciate what Eric, the potential buyer is trying to do and we support him in for doing it. And we act like we want affordable housing in Mount Vernon. But I am sick to death of people saying we don't want it in our backyard. This lot is next door to me and I would be the neighbor who made cookies instead of tell my neighbor what they can do with their money and their property. This is an $80,000 jab to me and my wife. Since I moved into my property, I have redone all the flooring. I've updated the bathroom. We fenced in the backyard. The furnace blew, the water heater blew, and the central air was restarted. In less than one year, I put $30,000 into my home. I am being a good steward of the neighbor, neighborhood and of my home. And to deny me the ability to sell this lot, they're going to say, but we didn't deny you the opportunity to sell this lot. Well, no one's gonna buy a lot if they're not allowed to build on it. This has already been denied and it was in the paper. So to say that my ability to sell this lot going forth is not extremely hindered, I believe would be short sighted. I have a very low chance of ever getting this sold. Because anyone with any ability to look anything up is gonna say, well, the historic society is gonna shoot it down again. My question is, one, why do they even have this power? Why do they have this vote? I don't understand. They apparently have the right to tell their neighbors what they can do with their money and their property and what they can't do. And I don't know, I grew up in a thousand, a town of a thousand farming community. That's not how you treat your neighbors. I don't understand the mind, the thought process of thinking you have that right. Furthermore, I have to believe that at some point since the eighties, the Mount Vernon City Council gave them this power. I don't think it would hold up in court. I don't think it makes sense. My wife and I absolutely feel like we are hamstrung right now, not only in this failed attempt, which has been booked for five months, but going forth because it was written about in the paper very blatantly without calling or texting or emailing me or my wife at the time. What is the perspective of us being able to sell the lot going forward? I think we would all agree it's pretty low. So I am very upset that they have the right to veto it. But I also am very upset at the precedent with which is already established and that they still vetoed it. Again, 2011 house on my block, three doors away. To the south of me, across the said lot that we're talking about, there's a giant monstrosity in a three stall garage in the back that has been added somewhat recently as well. How did that get approved? I don't know, but it did. So there is an absolute double standard. I don't know if I'm not old enough for the neighborhood or something. I don't know what the rationale is, but it doesn't add up. If they can have aluminum siding, why can't they? If they don't have to have a front porch, why do they have to have a front porch? And I am literally not even talking about the three or four square blocks of Ash Park. I'm talking about my block from Seventh Street to Eighth Street on Fifth Avenue. And all of that doesn't add up. It's not consistent. There is, it's an $80,000 hit. And I bet you would like me if I took $80,000 out of your pocket. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Alisson.
Thanks, Shane. I feel that you've got it out of point to have some questions. I have two questions, Chris. First of all, I wasn't here on the council in 2011, so I can't speak to that decision. Can you talk about to the people that are here for the record, the purpose of the historic preservation commission? And then the second question would be, since 2011, is it possible their standards changed?
Okay, so I'll do my best to answer all of those questions because we're kind of a little bit. We can have, because he's on the agenda, we can have communication back and forth.
Question, the little beret part?
Yes. You're not making any decisions, so it's just a matter of answering questions and recognizing the point. So number one, it's actually required by law. If you are going to have federally established historic districts, that you are going to have a local historic preservation commission to oversee those districts. So the requirement of having a historic preservation commission is required by at least state law, if not state and federal law. But I know for a fact, say, because we've talked about mirroring some of those ordinances. As far as precedence, this is the, the challenging, probably the more challenging aspect of this as it relates to Iowa because most communities in Iowa don't have historic preservation commissions. Mount Vernon, Iowa City, Des Moines, I mean, most of the larger urban centers do. Mount Vernon's a little bit of an exception because we're not called it, I think is how it probably got established in the first place. To your question about standards, that's where it gets challenging. Unlike zoning, where we have kind of a preset set of standards that they, they look at and then if they don't meet that, they go to the zoning board of adjustment for waivers. Historic preservation doesn't have standards per se. They have standards that are established by the state historic society. And then they're given a decent amount of leeway as far as making decisions in those individual districts. Now, there's, there is by code, the ability to appeal to the city council. So the historic preservation commission's ruling only becomes, you know, final after a 10 day lap. So the individuals have a 10 day period in which they can appeal their, those decisions to city council. And again, and I talked to Shane, we're dealing with a new chairperson and there's some education as far as what law is allowed that I've been doing the last couple of months. Just with some general frustrations that I have on the final item. So we've had to do some education that way. Here's the biggest challenge with, with this particular applications that came down to timing. So the federal grant that Shane alluded to had a December timeline. And the applicant was working with EZCAG, which is the East Central Iowa Council Government. And needed a determination, they, EZCAG wanted a determination whether or not this was going to receive approval. If it didn't, then EZCAG would submit the application that was for CDVG emergency fund. There's another acronym right behind it, but that's what this, this came down to. So the applicant didn't actually have time to appeal the decision to the city council. Did I answer your question? I mean, that's really kind of the basis for this. There is an appeal process. The council can review those actions and determine whether or not the, the, the best interest of the communities were followed. Now, as I told Shane, we do have local funds. I'm not sure if Eric is interested in still continuing. It is a LMI style project. It is something obviously we need and we have very few infill lots in the community. So I don't necessarily want to give up hope that we can continue to work. Now, I don't know if Eric is still interested. Our, our money doesn't have necessarily a timeline. So we could continue conversations if, if the applicant or the potential buyer is still interested. But I think that's what I can put on the table right now when you have funds that are available that could potentially help.
It does meet the charter of the recommendations of the housing commission for LMI.
Correct. And we have, to a certain extent, as Shane alluded to, this is kind of the, this is a really good example of government rotating. So in, in his, in Shane's defense, he has literally gone through four commissions. Planning, zoning, zoning board adjustment. To a certain extent, housing commission, which is trying to meet an LMI standard and then historic preservation. So most, 99% of the applications, they'll never have to go to more than two. And that's kind of the challenge. So got through P and Z, got through zoning board adjustment. HPC was kind of the, the last hurdle, you would say, but the timeline was really stretched. So I know that's not gonna help you right at the moment unless he's willing, like I said, to work with the city on potential funding. I don't know what kind of, so the, the only challenge with the, the grant applications is I don't know if he was looking at a tax credit program. They tend to sell those tax credits as how they make those projects work. So I can't really help him that way. But if it's, they were going to provide like a forgivable loan or a grant, then we can. His lot sits within that district, so we could, we could essentially work with that individual as well or a future applicant. Cause the other part of this is we are talking about the alternative dwelling units. And that will be another point of contention, obviously, in multiple districts throughout the community. If we, you know, mother father law suites or however you want to coin them, those are going to be a topic of conversation throughout next year as well, so.
But then those were also on the recommendations of the commission and also 2016 comp plan. So I think my thought on this is it disappoints me that it's, that we make it that hard to do something that does fit in those charters. I do understand, I live, I don't live in the Ash Park District, but I live just outside of it. And I understand where they're coming from from that perspective too. But it feels like we should research our possibilities here.
The amount of precedent that Shane has presented to us here. And I'm just driving down the neighborhood today, knowing that this was on the agenda and looking around. But obviously you folks live that neighborhood as well.
I lived there and I have my side.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think, so there, there are some possibilities here, not to get too far down into the conversation, but I can. I have not, I have actually talked to the individual that was looking at purchasing the lot before, because we were working through. But the city was going, has to be the, the vessel in which he was going to get funding. So my knowledge of this project is pretty extensive only because he was going to have to apply to the city.
Well, it came before the council, what, two or three months ago, but that was the planning of zoning, I believe.
Correct.
And we said, okay.
Yeah, this is a buildable lot. There's, I mean, the board of adjustment.
This is all about porch and siding.
Yeah, the, the board of adjustment ruling as far as is this a buildable lot or what can be done on it is, is finite. So staff can't overrule that, other commissions can't overrule that. Board of adjustment is a quasi judicial board. And there, unless the district court overrules them, their decision is final. So this is a buildable lot. There will be an application process. Whether or not it's Eric or somebody else that wants to come through the door. The best that I can offer right now, and I know it's not the best, is if, if the next application comes through or Eric wants to revise his application and is denied again, then there's the ability to appeal. Here's the other problem that I would tell you, not necessarily a good problem, I just don't have enough staff to go to all of these boardings commissions. So that 10 day period, that 10 day appeal period, that is something that you could change. That might be beneficial because by the time that I was aware of the denial, you know, it was pretty close to the end of the 10 days. So it gives the applicant a very short period of time to, to make some decisions.
Especially on these commissions.
Yeah, so, but again, if you're going to have historic districts, which I would absolutely have to research going back the other direction now that they're already established, but you do have to have the historic preservation commission.
I don't know if I can speak on chair of the commission. I would like to, Mr. Amason was not at our meeting because of, Mr. Guttmann represented himself as the purchaser of the lot. So he represented, he was invited to the meeting because he was the purchaser. And so Mr. Guttmann was not there to hear, I'm sorry, Mr. Amason was not there to hear our discussion. We didn't have any problem with multiple parties being in the house. We didn't have any problems with low, moderate income folks being in the house. Those were not considerations for us. The only consideration for us was the design of the building. It's a rectangular building with no window trim, doors just on two sides that go into a sidewalk. We didn't feel that that was appropriate for a historic district.
So it wasn't a porch on the side?
There was no porch, no porch.
But that, that was not why it was denied because of porch.
Well, the, we would like to have something around the openings of the building. That's typical in any historic district. Porches are great to have. The Appleby property that he was talking about, that has a wrapped round porch on the front. It looks like a mission style house. This was just a square, a rectangular structure. We did not feel that we could approve that for the historic district. We talked with Mr. Guttmann about whether there were funds available to make this more acceptable within the historic district. But he said there were not. So, and I would be glad to forward our denial to you, which explains it. I'd be glad to forward our minutes. I think our process has been misrepresented. I, I understand that he's unhappy and he's unhappy with a lot of things, but he was not at our meeting. Had I known that was a conditional purchase agreement, I would have invited him. Because he is still the owner of the property, I would have been glad to do that. But I, Mr. Guttmann said he had purchased the property. He told me that he had purchased it. He was the only person who was invited. So I hope you don't form a decision about what we do and why we do it without, I was not on the commission in 2011, but my understanding is that the homeowners worked really closely with the commission on the design of their house so that they would have something that would be appropriate for the historic district. And they would use materials that were appropriate for the historic district. So I haven't had a chance to talk to the Applebees yet or to go back through our minutes for 2011 because I just heard about this last week. So I'll be glad to do more research on that and we'll talk about it as a commission. But I don't think we are being on, like even in our application of reasonable standards for a historic district.
Thank you for that. And I would appreciate if you would, you know, like to.
Oh yeah, I'd be glad to do that. I just didn't know what was appropriate for this and I didn't know what kind of questions you have, you have or. I would be glad to talk in much more length about all of this.
Yeah, I doubt that, that I don't, I need Chris to help counsel us as far as our next steps are concerned. We wouldn't make any decision if a decision were made one way or the other until we had a chance to see what happened at that meeting. In fact, one of my questions was going to be, if I could, Shane, what was the discussion about precedent? But now it sounds like you weren't there and.
He was not there.
That would be helpful to see the minutes.
I was not there, I mean, not.
You weren't invited.
Furthermore, pertaining to, he said he was, he had a purchase agreement, he did have a purchase agreement, but it was contingent on this federal funding that he was looking for, which was denied because it was not approved.
So I, I would recommend that the way forward is, is that we, we get the minutes, we get the plans. We understand that. I was here in 2011. I don't remember the details of that. I can tell you that it did not come before council in terms of needing a, you know, an appeal at the time. So when there's no need for an appeal, we, as a council, would be involved. I'm certainly interested in what those processes were, what some of that discussion was. So I gave myself homework that I need to go look up 2011 historic preservation minutes, but that's okay. That's what you pay me the big bucks for. I, I think one of the clearest concerns that came out of this is the 10 day appeal window. There's 14 days between council meetings. You know, we would have to call an emergency meeting to.
Well, I would say, I would say this, they don't necess, you do not necessarily have to hold it here.
As long as within 10 days, they know the line is within 10.
So it's a notification, okay.
However, 10 days is still
Still pretty tight.
A fairly tight window when you're talking about an appeal process. And that portion of it, I question whether or not courts would look at that as a proper amount of time to allow for the appeal process. So everybody's allowed due process, correct?
Right. News is a big.
Yes. I mean. So that is, that is one aspect of the code that probably needs to be. But no, I, I mean, the challenge that I have is, is as the applicant, Eric would still have to bring some sort of appeal if he's still interested to the city council. I can like, again, there's a decent amount of money that is available for LMI housing that depending on what the applicant was looking for, we might be able to put on the table and some of this project somewhat salvageable, but.
That's what I was wondering, is there a point that we can bridge that gap?
Well, to be honest with you, like I said, it depends on what, what, what the individual is looking for. So I can't match the tax credit sale program if he's looking to sell tax credits. That's one challenge, but these were, they're CDBG DR disaster relief that were specifically earmarked because of the very chill event. So there was additional monies that were granted to this corridor through CDBG. So they're pretty in the past, very few projects, especially in Mount Vernon get, get through. But this was an opportunity because of the disaster relief portion of it, where we had a chance. If, again, let's just say it's $50,000 that he was seeking for this bill. We have that.
Are we still within the 10 day timeframe of that?
No, however, there's no, there's no, there's nothing that would disallow him from going back to the historic preservation.
Resmitting, asking for a resuminal process.
Yes.
And we invited that.
Yeah, it just initiates the process all over again. But that, that's kind of what I could offer at this point. And it wouldn't necessarily have to be this person either, if somebody else is interested and then. Again, we have a pot of money for LMI, portions of it are spoken for, but we still have a significant amount coming from both subdivisions that has to be spent on these particular projects. It might even be slightly more lucrative than even the CDBG with fewer strings attached.
Any further questions, Chris, about this? Any further questions, Chris, about this? If not, I would take up, take you up with your suggestion. If you could center through Chris to strip it to us.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
City of Alberta.
And if you'd like me to talk more about it, if you have questions about what I said, I'd be glad to come back in.
Thank you.
Saturday at eight thirty?
Yes, eight thirty Saturday, yeah.
Any other comments as far as publics, public communications?
I, I would just say that it's important that when there are concerns like this, people need to bring them forward, bring them to the right people, or nothing can be even looked at as a remedy. Just because something is in an ordinance today and is written doesn't necessarily mean it's right. Sometimes we are hamstrung by state federal laws, but I, I, you know, to, you know, in deference to Shane and the disadvantage that he is at and experience, I appreciate this being brought forward because we do support historic preservation as a community, but we also support our property owners and looking to, to make our community more welcoming through LMI. So rather than complaining on the street or to your neighbor, you have the opportunity to come to council and, you know, talk to us. So thank you for that.
Thanks to both of you for being here.
Moving on to the consent agenda, I think at this point, we have fourteen items on the consent agenda. Anything, anybody else question about, or wants to poll? Here we go, I'll check the motion. Is the consent agenda so moved? Please call the second.
Second.
Ready to vote, all favor the motion to approve the agenda, please, I'm sorry, approve the consent agenda. Say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. No public hearing, no ordinance approval, no resolutions. There will be a mayoral proclamation next month, next meeting on the human trafficking prevention and awareness month of this. This is the month that the speaker could not get here for this meeting. I think she's kneeling tonight, so. No old business, motions for approval versus claims list that marches out this afternoon for a voice vote. Is there any question, are there any questions about that? Or look forward on approving the claims list?
I will make a motion to approve the claims list.
Thank you Stephanie, I'll second that, yeah, great. We're in the vote, all favor approving the claims list, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. I'm J two, special consideration of city hall renovation technology quote. Just got a question on number two, yes, okay.
So I looked at that and I, I don't know how much tech it's going to cost, whether twenty thousand, five hundred dollars is good, bad, or indifferent. My only question here was, was there anything that is currently at the police station that could be moved over here so we don't have to buy everything new?
So most of what can be moved over here is.
The soundboard?
Yes. Some of the, the, some of the technology even that we can move over is.
Because mics are on that list, for example.
Yeah, so they're, they're kind of of a nature that if we're going to have, so the, the plan is right now, there'll be a TV there so that council can see the TV. And then there will actually be two TVs behind you so the audience can see exactly what the council is looking at as well. So they have moved over some items that can, can be moved over. The prices are in line with what we've done upstairs. But yeah, if we had to add some of that equipment over there, probably, I won't say double, but.
I would also think that as, as quickly as technology moves, that sometimes it's better to just invest in the latest, you know, in two weeks it will be absolutely.
You know what's going to happen in here? We have these two TVs. We're going to go from an icebox over there at the police station to a furnace in here with these two TVs.
I thought I was hoping this would work.
And in the near future, you'll be getting another one of these quotes for the police department's renovation as well, for the technology portion of that. One thing we did indicate, did notice the other day when we were moving everything over here, the quote includes two TVs. If you're going to want three, two behind you, one over here on the wall over here, that'll be an addition. So we may want to put a little cushion.
The cheapest part.
Maybe, maybe we want to put a little cushion in, addition onto the quote.
Those are the other question. How open ended should that twenty thousand be?
Probably not to exceed twenty one, twenty one thousand.
Hearing that background, is there anyone that's willing to put a motion towards that? Twenty one thousand dollar number, second?
Second.
Thank you Scott. Motion on the floor to follow through on the city hall technologies to Billmore, not exceed twenty one thousand. Ready to vote on that, no questions for Chris. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item three, motion for approval, discussion consideration of community betterment endowed fund at the Great City Rapids Community Foundation, council action and council actions needed. Item six, I was contacted by the Great City Rapids Foundation about a potential donor who wanted to set up a Mount Vernon community betterment endowed fund. This donor is aware that there's school foundations, there's Cornell foundations, there's ambulance service, fire service, everybody's got fundraising sources towards their cause. But this was to be a community wide betterment endowed. This person wanted to establish as a base and then other people could add to it down the road. I took the documents, shared them with Holly Corkery at Lynch Dallas the same day that I met with them. She in turn turned it over to the Lynch Dallas specialist who was Steve Leidemire. And after a room call with the foundation a couple of days ago, things are progressing towards the paperwork being correctly documented. Great City Rapids Foundation has not had a community betterment endowed fund in their repertoire. They've got five hundred different sub-fundations, but they've not one like this. But, so this is new, new territory legally for them too. So this is an opportunity to communicate to the council that this is in the process of going. We're sensitive to the communication when the press release, released by that organization that fumbled through the sun first with maybe a Wednesday announcement or an announcement that's one weekend that can go in the next Wednesday paper. But they're excited about it just because it's doing good for them. Our commitment is to put together a possibly five person subcommittee of, not these five, but group from the community to on an annual basis allocate that four percent of whatever's going to be gifted that year to nonprofits in the Mount Vernon. So that has been going on for planning works for the last month or two and will continue. And this is, it's more informational, I may have got down there for a possible motion, but is there, I guess.
Is there actually anything to take?
No, so.
Are you sure you're aware of it equally and?
And really, I think this is kind of just for informational purposes and for you to, to hold tight. This is just kind of coming down the road sooner rather than later. But most of this information will actually come out of a joint release amongst the two entities. So we can't get into any of the specifics with anybody. Just wanted to make sure, if you had a right leg, this was your opportunity to say before everybody spends time and money and efforts to make this happen, which is let us know, realizing that the chances of that are generally miniscule, but.
I'm waiting to agree.
All in order, so let's go.
Just making sure that it wasn't a scenario where it's just the mayor and I in what knowledge of what's going on.
Yeah, I think the only thing would be if there was some knowledge that some kind of, some kind of fund already existed that it would be superfluous to do this, I don't, this sounds crazy.
No, I, I would tell you that it's just the opposite.
Yeah, it's great.
The fact that we would not have to house something internally would be a huge lesson.
The quarterly annual reporting and auditing is not on our, on our, at our desk, so that's.
There's all kinds of reasons to utilize the services.
I may be going too far down the rabbit hole on it, but has there been any vetting of the individual providing the funds or are they going to get bit by some? There's this scandal that we.
I'm smiling.
There's not going to be any problem with this one. I can only guess.
And that's the wishes of the donor at this point. There will be later public recognition of that. But, no.
Thanks to the donor.
Yeah.
Yeah. Assuming general consensus.
Thanks for the information.
Not trying to be invasive, but that's what can be shared at this point. Item four, discussion consideration of the application number one, did you ask for construction services? First street bridge repairs.
So you received a revised pay estimate and keep in mind that this pay estimate includes the seven thousand dollar change order that is also on your agenda, the revised agenda that came, came out Tuesday. But the, the total contract amount went from a hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars to a hundred and seventy four thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. I would say that the original estimate for the city was a hundred and seventy eight thousand or a hundred and seventy five thousand, give or take. Because it's a bridge and cleaning up the damage now, a little say was having to replace a bridge at some point in the future, engineers pushed forward with the additional damage. We knew, and that's why it was bid as a quantity item, that this was going to have some potential. So this pay application is in the amount of one hundred and seventy two thousand, seven hundred and sixty, seventy six dollars and fifty cents. The work is done. Actually, there's a little disruption to, to the driving ability, so.
I didn't even know what happened.
I was going to say, I thought I missed it, actually.
Yeah.
There was one day.
Yeah.
One day where.
They had flyers out.
And it's been worse than all of a sudden. One day that you don't.
I must have just taken secret screw in the town that day. Do the motion on follow through on this, I would move approval.
What was the, I apologize, what was the, so the, the number I'm looking at is one seventy, seventy and one fifty.
So there was another one that was sent?
Okay.
And it's.
I mean, there were like five dollars.
There was a quantity that was wrong that me and Kay said out the following day. So I apologize, there were three emails that came out really, really fast that related to this. So I just relayed them to you as, as soon as I was given the information by the engineer.
Okay. All motions still on the table?
I would second.
I'd like to thank you. Any other discussion questions? All favor of approving J four, all favor of, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item five, discussion consideration of the application number one, deconstruction, public works cold storage.
This is a pay application in the amount of seventy three thousand, five hundred and fifty five dollars. These are pre-engineered buildings, so they're on order. This is, well, even though there's no structure, it's actually going on right at the moment, but they're going to be delivered, so.
So any site prep that needs to happen?
Thankfully, most of the public works department has done quite a bit of the site prep. There is a little bit, but not much.
Ready to move forward on that? I would move approval of first pay, pay application number one for deconstruction in the amount of seventy three thousand, five hundred and fifty five dollars.
I heard that, thank you.
Fifty five cents.
Thank you. I think we know what you meant, did you catch it, Marsha?
Who's the second?
Great, I think, right, sure. All great. Ready to vote on that motion? Application to deconstruction, all favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. One agenda clarification here, Chris. Can we have the next meeting being discussed at some point, the date of that? Was that a discussion?
Did not have that on here.
Item seven.
Item seven.
J seven.
Oh, you're still on the whole agenda there?
Yep, yep.
I was talking about J five.
There was a revised agenda that was sent out as well.
When I did my prep, this was the one I printed out.
Luckily, the one that you have is a duplicate, you have it.
Yes.
So what's the next role for the destruction, what's next going to happen?
So after deconstruction would be the change order number one for first street bridge. That is the change order for seven thousand dollars for the flaggers that were required to have.
With that explanation, is there a motion to move forward on, on that pay application?
The change order number one.
Change order number one, okay.
First street bridge.
Hope you caught all that, Marsha.
I would move approval of the pay application for change order number one to jazz reconstruction. No, we, we did that.
You paid, you did the.
Oh, we did that, this is, this is not a change order. Yep, it's like, right, okay. So I would.
I'll just second.
So item J six, ready to vote on that? All favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Now J seven, consideration for the next council meeting, which falls typically on the Department of Pink Day, which is not a holiday for staff. But I thought it should be a council decision with staff to see about meeting that night. So what is the move of the group? What kind of new territory, because I think it was just made a national holiday maybe the last year or two? A federal holiday, a federal holiday last year.
I'm willing and able to meet on either Tuesday or Wednesday, that week.
Do we want to move on against the first question? And then, then one two? I didn't think it should be necessarily a mayoral decision, unless there was something that felt strongly.
I don't, I mean, we wouldn't meet on another holiday, so I think it's justified to move it.
You know, I, I would say this, I think there are individuals out there that would say it was in poor taste, not to.
Yeah, yeah.
Even though it's not a staff holiday, that does not, you know, maybe.
To respect the holiday.
It is a, it's a holiday. If there are events that you want to attend, then I wouldn't want to have a meeting, but.
I will be on holiday in Mexico, irregardless of which day that you have.
Hold your spot.
I'm going to do this for senior for all of us.
We had a bunch of management meeting that on Tuesday, so I would steer people through the Wednesday, the eighteen.
I would prefer that as well, I require rehearsal on Tuesday.
With the recognition like Chris just mentioned about the tone of the setting of the national holiday, we will A, change it from Monday and then B, to Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Is that in motion and so on?
I would so move.
Second, Scott, and I'll give it to Paul here. Officially vote on this, all favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Reports, discussion reports from the mayor. Got an emergency management services, we need, I picked it on a pin on that seventeen and has great interest at the beginning, before the meeting started, interview an interest by the Gazette on childhood, childcare in the Lisbon, Mount Vernon area. Another whole lot of great new, positive news to share, but tell them what we wrestle for. Got a timeline around.
Can you mean for tomorrow, I'm sorry?
It's a phone call, we.
Okay, good.
Otherwise, I definitely might you.
There's no words.
Phone call, I don't know what the final decision was.
Thanks for giving that.
Anything from the city administrators report?
No, other than I had marked on my report that I was going to hopefully start interviewing the sixteen that will be in the back of the week minimum. I will start making contact with the individuals that are in the top four or five.
Was there a good pool of candidates?
There was, and honestly, there was a pretty clear consensus amongst the individuals that I had reviewed. As always, I will make that interview schedule available. If you would like to sit in the interview and provide feedback, I welcome that. They're usually here in the day. This is a fairly big decision because, you know, in my absence, this person will be operating for me. But I don't always have takers, but you're more than welcome to sit through. I absolutely welcome the feedback when we're, when we're happy. sit through, I absolutely welcome the feedback, when we're, when we're absolutely, you know, like this, I make Marcia sit through them because she's one on vacation with you for.
I assume that if you want to sit in, you'd want us to sit in all of them, not just...
Yes, to be, now, I will tell you that in normal circumstances, I usually try to limit interviews to an hour and then try to get them at least done in a day or over a two-day period. This will be a little trickier, number one, because I have people that will likely be traveling, and number two, this is, at, at this level of position, I want to make sure that I give due time to show them around the community, have conversations, and then actually be part of the interview. So there'll be a process that I will go through with them, just showing them around the community, and then move back for an actual interview for a vice person, I haven't decided how I'm going to do that quite yet. It won't be as involved as my two-day affair for this position, but it will be, it will be, it'll be a little bit more extensive.
Were you interviewed with ten council members?
Yeah, I did, two councils, so it's pretty good.
First floor, Collins and Earl.
I have never been in the city, the whole council chambers was...
And you still took the job.
I know. The dynamic was definitely interesting when, when, when the firm doing the, the search comes to you and says, now, before we get started, because they didn't forewarn us about any of this, these are the frameworks, and so I had a process to go through, I had a outgoing and an incoming council person paired together. It was fun, yeah.
So question, whether or not we sit in on this, are you going to run this by the personal committee?
So probably not the personal committee, I think in this instance, I would run this across the entire council. So once they become candidates, the cat's kind of out of the bag. I mean, once they agree to interview, then their names become public. So that'll be a determination that they'll make before coming here, so they'll be well aware that they will be mentioned. The other thing to that is, a lot of times what I will do is have them sign a request or allow us to go into close session, I have that discussion if we would like. My preference is to have the same communication coming to the entire council in one setting, so I don't lose anything in translation. But yeah, I, I think that will be kind of generally speaking, the rock of the movement for it.
Sounds good.
Any else as far as reports are concerned? Any else that should come before this group? Then I...
I would just like to quickly make a statement. Thank you to Sue Repete for her many years of service. For those that aren't aware, Sue chose to retire and take her time with her family, well earned, and also then I would like to welcome Marcia in her new duties, and I know there's been some, you know, modifications, I think they're welcome modifications, but I've worked with Marcia for, for enough time to know that she will perform her duties as well as anyone for the city of Mount Burn and so on.
Thank you. Sue didn't fully disappear, I think she's actually going to, well, she's planning to work at city hall after the four-month period of time that she has to be away, but I found out today she might actually work in the LBC from time to time, or...
Matthews having five hundred people so...
I don't know, she's keeping her options open.
One last thing I did, I did send you another, did send you another email today, I did make the changes on the accomplishments list.
I thought they looked good.
The ears, and then putting the, the projects in low to high numbers, so there's nothing else, I, I would give everybody through the end of this week, but I would like to go ahead and start printing some copies off and having that city hall, and then I have department head that I would like them to share with our staff.
Well, I think that any candidate you bring in, he or she should have a copy of that.
Yeah, I, you know, there'll be a number, definitely a number of conversations, and I would say fifteen candidates for a position like this that has HR, it's such a big, it's pretty big, I was, I was excited, good.
Any, any else that needs to come before this council? If not, it's, it's the fourth word, it's your...